Good evening, everybody. Hello, hello. Welcome to night three of our info sessions. We made it. This is our final night for this week for the May 12 annual and special town meetings that are coming up very soon. Welcome. Tonight, we're going to be covering the special town meeting number one warrant articles, of which there are 12 of them. And then we're going to move into the Community Preservation Act articles as well, including the CPA projects, which we'll go over. So, the couple of different presenters tonight. The first person coming up is going to be our Chief Financial Officer, Jeff O'Neil, who you remember from Monday night. And he'll be going through the special town meeting warrant articles to kick us off. Jeff?
Thank you, Mike. Welcome, everybody. My name is Jeff O'Neil, Director of Finance, Town Council. Welcome to the final night. And we're going to discuss the special town meeting number one, also known as special town meeting in other years. Obviously, we have two this year, so we're going with number one. The purpose of the special town meeting is usually to deal with fiscal matters of the current fiscal year and/or items that are pressing or should be upcoming here and use of free cash. So, as we go through, you'll see each one of those topics come up. So, we will get right into it. Special town meeting number one articles. The first one is the internal transfers. Again, this is a standing—
Shut up!
Okay, okay. John, I guess.
Is that an article? I was just joking.
I guess nobody likes this article. My family's around anyway, I think. Okay, so Article One, Internal Transfers. This is a standing article that's there. So, this will adjust the general government to cover known overages at this time. So, right now, if we're looking at our budget, the only line item we need to address is the snow and ice removal overtime. As the explanation states, our towns crews handle the majority of snow and ice incidents this year, so we did have a overtime cost exceed the budget. On the flip side, we did not use as much of the snow and ice contracted services line, so we do have funds there. So, there is no impact on the budget. This is just a transfer between those two lines. The next four articles are going to be in conjunction with the Norwood Public Schools. Sean Mannion, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, is here. I will talk through those. He will be able to answer questions. So, Article Two is an appropriation to the Special Education Reserve Fund. So, the Norwood School Committee is seeking to transfer funds from free cash into the Special Education Reserve Fund in order to reach the maximum allowable balance under Massachusetts law. That is 2% of net school spending. So, looking at the—oh, geez, I did it again. All right, here we go. So, net school spending is $79 million. If we take 2% of that, $1,589.59 is the allowable balance for the Special Education Reserve Fund. Current fund balance is $700,000. So, the school committee has requested a transfer of $880,959 to get up to the 2% maximum. During the discussions, the Board of Selectmen, they recommended a smaller transfer of $300,000, bringing the reserve balance to $1 million. Now, it's important to note that the motion will be made by the Finance Commission. They are meeting tonight to go through all of the articles. So, that number may change. The motion may not be either one of those numbers, or maybe one of those, or maybe something else. But that's the purpose of this article. Moving on to Article Three. This is another standing article, appropriation for school technologies. Seems like there's an audio problem. Can you see that? They can't hear you online. They did tell me to shut up.
I can't wait to hear that in a re-broadcast.
I'm going to try to edit some of this out. Can you hear us now, online? Online, folks? Yes? Okay. Jeff, you might want to back up.
I think you've got to go over them again.
All right. You might have to take it back a second. Why don't we start with Article One? Okay, welcome, everybody. We'll start by going through Article One. Again, standing transfer, internal transfer item. So, this article adjusts the budget for the known overages at the time of the town meeting. As previously discussed, we have one right now, the snow and ice removal overtime. The towns crews were busy to handle most of the snow and ice incidents, so our overtime cost exceeded the budget. We did not use as much in the contracted services line, so we'll be doing a transfer from one line to another. Again, no net impact on the budget, just a transfer of the two line. Article Two, appropriation to the Special Education Reserve Fund. So, the Norwood School Committee is seeking to transfer funds from free cash into the Special Education Reserve Fund. We want to reach the maximum allowable balance under Massachusetts law, which is 2% of net spending. Looking at the numbers, net spending for fiscal '24, the most recent completed year, is just over $79 million. Maximum allowable reserve at 2% is just over $1.5 million. Current balance of $700,000. The school committee has asked for the $880,959 to be transferred from free cash to fully from the reserve. Again, during the Board of Selectmen's deliberations and meeting on the warrant, they did recommend a smaller transfer of $300,000 to get to the balance of $1 million. And again, the motion will be made by Finance Commission, who is meeting tonight to go over all of these warrant articles. So, the motion will allocate the amount that the FinCom recommends, which may be the 800, maybe the 300, or maybe another number, depending on their discussions tonight. Questions?
Now that we've come back to it. Question. What is the advantage to the town to have the money in the reserve fund as opposed to not?
So, again, Sean Mannion, Assistant Superintendent, Finance and Operations.
What's the advantage of having the money in the reserve fund versus not? I mean, the school committee, we'll see what the recommendation from FinCom is, but the school committee and school administration believe that we should build this reserve up to the maximum. We currently don't expect any decrease in federal funding for next year, but we're closely watching things that are coming from the feds. And this is a reserve, so it could help through any sort of period where funding may come down. This—we also have a special education review that's going on right now that might come forward with recommendations. So, this would be, you know, a funding source that could help if there are recommendations that come out of that. And lastly, it just serves as a reserve for, like, funds that are expenses that may be unforeseen, things like special education can also often be volatile, like out-of-district placements when you have new placements move into. So, it's just a good practice to have a reserve. And the school committee administration believe we should build it up to the maximum, and ideally, we just hold it for those unforeseen times. The counter, Select Board, you could speak to their reasoning.
Are there other such reserve funds, or is this the only one within the school?
So, we have a large funding source called Circuit Breaker that comes from the state for special education. It reimburses maybe 50% of the out-of-district tuitions, and by law, we can carry that forward for one year. So, we've been in a fortunate situation where we don't need to use all of the Circuit Breaker funds in any given year. And typically, with the school department, like, right now, we just did our third quarter projection, and we're projected to end the year with $800,000. Typically, with the school district, we would say—we would not use some of our Circuit Breaker, we would not use some of our stabilization, and we would carry forward as many funds as we can. It's not like the town side where typically, we go to free cash. Usually, on the school side, we'll build up our reserves and keep those. So, the Circuit Breaker would be one mechanism, but they're not explicitly called reserves, I guess.
I don't mean to beat a dead horse. I know the other night, I had mentioned, when I was watching school board meetings, that one of the school board members said they had extra cash left over, and they were discussing what to do with it. Why didn't they pad the special education fund with it instead of trying to figure out another way to spend it? Wouldn't that have been more logical than to ask the town to foot more bills out of free cash when our free cash is already going down?
Well, we haven't made it to the end of the year yet, but I will say, we're sort of in—right now, in this year, they built the budget using 550 of the 700 in this reserve, and next year's budget is using another 550. We hope to not have to use that. So, if we don't use it, or if we end with a balance of 800,000, like we're projecting now, the first thing we will do is reserve, keep all of this reserve funded. And then the second thing we would do is carry it forward through Circuit Breaker. But they haven't made any of those deliberations yet because we haven't gotten to end of the year. I think it's just a sound financial practice. The school committee believes to build up these reserves as much as possible, given, again, like what we're hearing, could be, you know, reductions in federal funding in the future, could be difficult budgets in the future, so—and then, thirdly, special education can be very volatile. So, ideally, these special education reserves are meant for school districts to have and not necessarily plan on using, and that they're there for those sort of unforeseen circumstances.
I don't—I don't—that—that's not what I was talking about. I don't have a problem padding special education. It's a necessary one that has to be done. But when a school committee member sits and states the fact that there is extra cash left over for this year, and they state on camera, what are we going to spend it on, or where can we spend it? To me, the most logical thing to have said was, put it towards special education instead of asking for money from the taxpayers to do this because everything keeps coming out of free cash. They—that statement was totally wrong, to me, as a taxpayer, to have said it. Don't look where else you can spend it just to get rid of it. Pad your special education, because that's what you should be able—you should be doing because that is allowed by law. But to look for something else, that—that's insulting to taxpayers.
I haven't heard that from this—
It was about a month ago, and it was said, and I was floored that the statement was even said.
Yeah. Personally, I haven't heard that, and maybe it was—the context was different, but everything that I've heard and the superintendent has discussed is if there's money left over, we're going to use it in our reserves. We're not looking for things to just spend it on.
Okay. Then she was out of line for it, the way she said—
So, I don't know. If it was the interpretation or how—
You said at a school—did you attend a school committee meeting?
Yeah, I've been at every school committee meeting. So, again, it might have been in how it was said, but that's not what we're looking to do in any respect. We're looking to save every dollar we can for reserves.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Just to be clear, it was my understanding that any balance that the school department has, by law, is already allowed to prepay some special education expenses for the following year with that money. They can also buy textbooks, and I thought they could even pay for some technology. In other words, you don't want to lose that money or tell the state you don't need money. What you're allowed to do is use it for a few specific things in the next fiscal year. That—I was on school committee for seven years. It was a long time ago, early 2000s, but that's what we would do with it. Try to prepay the—some of the tuitions that we could with whatever the balance was, or buy textbooks if new textbooks were in the budget. This would be, in addition to that, a reserve from free cash. I don't know how the school department's going to close June 30th. You know, the closer they get, the better they know. But they're already allowed to do some prepaying, and then, of course, a lot of the tuitions for the out-of-state or more serious schools, out-of-district schools, their tuitions often go up, and those are controlled, I think, by DOR or some other state organization. So, I can understand the need for this fund, but I would hope that the school department is using their balance that way. If they have a balance, that they are prepaying whatever they can in special education for fiscal 2026. And if they have any other money, they use it to buy the new textbooks or technology. So, but this is a separate, in addition, free cash, which I can understand because you can have students whose IDPs change, or the out-of-district placement rates, tuitions change and go up, and nothing ever goes down. So, I can understand the need for it. But to the previous speaker, Gerald Doyle's point, perhaps it wasn't stated well enough for people to understand what's going on at the school department level, but they are legally allowed to use their unexpected balances. Isn't that still true, the prepaid spend or textbooks?
It is. Yeah, you're exactly correct. There is a few mechanisms that a school can do. So, we can prepay our next year's tuitions. We can also, as I said, we can carry forward Circuit Breaker funds. So, current year Circuit Breaker funds are $4.2 million. So, we can carry forward up to $4.2 million. So, typically, school districts do that first rather than prepaying because it's a little bit more flexibility, and you don't have to pay for something in a future fiscal year. It makes—it's easier on the books and the reporting. In some instances, districts find it useful to prepay for those certain types of allowable costs. But our—the current plan with whatever balance is available, like I said, we just did our third quarter, and we're projecting a balance of about 800,000. The first thing we would do is keep the 700 in this reserve because we were—our budget said that we need to use 550 of that, 550,000. So, the first 550,000, we would keep in the sped reserve to keep that at 700 and hopefully increase it with the free cash. The next amount, which would be another—if it ends up being $800,000 balance, the next 150,000, we would just carry forward on our Circuit Breaker fund.
There's a question on mine. There was a hand up, but they put their hand down.
But the theme of everything, we're just trying to, you know, conscientiously, responsibly use the funds for education, look forward at the risks that we're seeing, you know, potential risks are always there with special education or with federal funding, and also have a reserve that can help us weather, you know, difficult budgets or things like that.
Okay, moving on to Article Three, appropriation for school technology needs. Again, this is an annual warrant article here in Norwood. So, we are asking for $70,000 from free cash for school department IT capital needs. The purpose of this is we participate in what's called the E-Rate program. It's a federal program that allows for substantial discounts for various technology. The funding for that is in the springtime, so we need to use free cash now so the schools can go out now and order the products that they're looking for. As mentioned, $40,000 is used to replace 21 AG IMAX. $30,000 used to replace 25 updated Windows computers. This has gone through the Capital Outlay Committee and was unanimously approved. Again, yes, sir?
Just a quick question, not specifically for this particular article, but it comes up every year where there's some expenditure for the schools above and beyond planned budgeted items. Are those expenses then included in the final numbers? Because they don't seem to be a budgeted item because we had technology last year. We had another thing that we voted on last year. So, does that end up in the expenditure number that goes to the state, to the DESI, or does that—
Yes, it will. So, when we report to DESI, we report on every dollar spent. So, that includes our school budget, our capital, it includes even the costs that the town pays that are really for school, like parts of facilities, parts of health insurance, parts of HR, parts of finance. Every dollar, grants revolving, is reported to the state. What this really is, is the technology for the school has not historically been done in the fall capital. It's always been done in the spring capital. So, this is really akin to the capital outlay that's typically done at the fall town meeting, but for the last several years, because of the nature of the E-Rate and the school technology purchasing cycle, this has been the one capital request that has been in the spring.
So, if technology is constantly recurring with requests, shouldn't then be in the budget?
There are lots of technology in the budget as well. This is more like capita—so, again, this is more like capital technology. The high school's reaching an age where a lot of these things, like the computer labs and the auditoriums, are finally aging out. So, some things in the high school now that's like over 12 years old are starting to age out, and they need to be replaced. But it's more of a capital because it's related to a building than the reoccurring technology, which we do have a budget for.
And again, this is because of the E-Rate program and the timing of that. We need to get those requests in for funding by April 9.
Right. See, I'm not supposed to, but I'm just saying, I've kind of—every year, we kind of have this little—we have the budget, we have this, and then we always have something more.
It's the one capital request that they do in the spring. Somebody may know the full history on that.
I think it has to just do with the E-Rate, like you said. Yeah, I mean, we would love if you joined us in the fall, but we understand that this is specific to the grant programs. We understand that that's why it happens now.
I think, aside from that, this would be usually something that would be seen in the fall with the rest of the capital.
Yeah, I hit also, yeah, but another reason for it is because of, like with Chromebooks a couple of years ago, is in order for it to be there for the coming school year. So, think about it. If you do it in the fall, the year is already started. So, that's in order to have—
Yeah, I assume to get that, the year's already started.
Have things like that, right?
Yeah, I get that. There's no question.
That—that was historically one of the reasons behind it.
One of the other—I staff the Capital Outlay Committee from the manager's office, and one of the reasons why it's not built into the budget is because the dollar amounts vary each year. There isn't like a standard dollar amount. If it was 70,000 each year, I guess you could build it in. But it swings depending on the needs. So, I think a couple of years ago, they had like $100,000 in there, but you wouldn't want a budget at that amount because the next year might drop, or the next year might go up. So, rather than doing this, it's easier just to keep it in capital.
And that's a good point. This isn't a ca—even though it's in the spring, like I said, it's in the capital outlay plan. So, if you look at that plan, there's five years ahead on school technology, and this has been talked about for the last—
It's been on the five-year plan.
Five-year plan. So, this is just the next year of the plan, basically.
Yeah, question. Given that E-Rate is a federal program, and so many federally funded programs are being quashed right now, do we know if this is at risk?
This could be one of the, you know, first things that we see that could be potentially at risk. So, I think that's another reason to kind of approve it, reason to get this one through now. I mean, what that would mean—the way E-Rate works is it's a reimbursement, so it lowers our costs. It would basically mean that when these capital requests come, they're going to be increased, which is another reason to keep the reserves built up and everything else. But we have heard a little bit that E-Rate could be something that could be at risk.
These numbers just strictly apply to hardware, not software?
Yes.
Because if you upgrade—if you upgrade the hardware, aren't you going to have to upgrade some of the software?
The software is in the regular school budget because the E-Rate and the capital, it will only reimburse for capital expenditures and hardware. So, the software would be in the budget. We'd cover it in our regular school budget.
A follow-on question to that, seeing as I didn't know about Monday night's meeting. Have you looked into, when it comes to software licensing, maybe combining with the surrounding towns to lower costs?
I believe so, yeah. Our IT director, Mr. Joe Kidd, he's looked at everything. He's always—he's very conscientious about looking at that. There are instances—it's—I'm sure he would say it's kind of an—it's an interesting time now with all the cybersecurity threats. So, I know we've discussed whether we can combine with other towns recently, but because of so many cybersecurity and hacking threats, that it might be more prudent right now to kind of manage it yourself. That's a big concern in these days.
Sean, do you have a question online? Ed, you're up.
I agree with what Joe said, by the way. Security is an issue to the community as a whole, but unfortunately, the E-Rate program, because it is a recurring program. There's a possibility, because you're looking at about $150 per unit, it's really only about $7,000 off of $7,000. If that happens, there are likely many ways for the budget to still be able to make the purchase.
Yeah, I mean, I think so. I think we would have to look at the budget, depending on when the purchase—purchasing cycle starts. If we find out that some of these funds—I mean, I think if this is voted and we can immediately purchase it, we should be good. But if we need to—we'll have to revisit—you know, our FY '26 budget won't go into effect until July, and then we'll have to revisit all the line items and look at them.
Well, the purpose of the plan is immediately, then what happens to the funds?
Well, the town—the warrant articles exist for at least a year, I believe. So, I think—I think the plan is to purchase these items immediately once it's approved.
E-Rate gave us the price in a written letter. The price is set there, so we won't be spending this money.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, I think we're pretty confident in E-Rate for this cycle and in these two items. I think it would be something we're just—it's really on our radar for the future.
Okay, thank you.
When you just said that they gave—they've given you the money, you mean they've approved the money? Because you said it's reimbursed, right?
We are submitting the application, yes. So, it's so we know what the price is.
I'm just thinking, what happens to a bunch of the farmers and stuff who, you know, were doing building and supposed to get reimbursed?
A lot of this is billed directly to the supplier. So, not a risk for us.
Good, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Article Four, appropriation to Mass Health Medicaid expenditures. So, this came about working with Sean, the town, and while we were working through the budget, there was an opportunity to look at our revenue line, Medicaid, yes, sorry, Medicaid Mass Health. So, right now, in our annual budget, we have a $350,000 line that's in there. So, the schools perform the services, they bill out, we get the reimbursement from the state. So, what the superintendent and assistant superintendent came up with is—is an idea to fund three positions using $300,000 in free cash that will also allow us to bill for more of the services. So, they're taking two occupational therapists out of the general budget, and then they're adding one board-certified behavior analyst. So, those three positions, the $300,000 will fund their salary and benefits for the year, and we anticipate an increase in that revenue. So, again, this is seed money for the first year. We're not going to see the full result in that first year, but we do believe we'll see an increase in revenue and like a determination for fiscal '27 what to do with these positions. Yes?
Out of curiosity, by doing it this way, does that save to keep more—the kids in-house instead of sending them out of house for services?
I don't know on a case-by-case basis, but it definitely means we could do more services in-house. I mean, a lot of students that we already educate in-house get—are getting these services, the OTPT and the DCBA. So, I think it would be—if we didn't have these positions, we may be at risk for maybe more students having to get services out of district.
I know there are, like, some kids you absolutely have to send them out of service because I don't know if the school still sends some kids down. I think it's in Rhode Island Hasbro Hospital because they're equipped to deal with them and because federal law says every child shall be educated regardless. So, that I know. But I was hoping, because you're adding this, that it might help some that are not on that higher spectrum of services to stay within our town.
I think so. Two of these positions are already in our budget, and we're moving them out. So, you know, this helps us keep everything in our budget that we already have and keeps two staff that we already have. And this is like, like we mentioned, this is sort of seed money for one year so that we can—basically, we're not claiming for all the services that we could claim to get this revenue source. And if we can build up that claiming, which will take a little bit of time working with staff to get more—more of the service providers that are our staff claiming things like the OTPT and the DCBA, we should be able to increase this revenue source. This is sort of seed money to get us through a year, and then it'll be on the school district's tasks to—to show that we've got the revenue increase to pay for this.
I'll just have a question online. Carolyn?
Go ahead, Carolyn.
Hi, thank you. Just really quickly, so I—so it is a line. The OTs, the two currently staffed, is that correct?
That's correct. The OT positions are currently in our regular budget, and the plan for next year is to move them to this budget, this funding source.
Because I don't know if the schools still send some kids down. I think it's in Rhode Island Hasbro Hospital because they're, they're equipped to deal with them and because federal law says every child shall be educated regardless. So, um, that I know, but I was hoping because you're adding this, that it might help some that are not on that higher spectrum of services to stay within our town.
I, I think so. Two, two of these positions are already in our budget and we're moving them out. So, yeah, you know, this helps us keep everything in our budget that we already have and keeps two staff that we already have. And, um, this is like, like, um, we mentioned, this is sort of seed money for one year so that we can, basically, we're not claiming for all the services that we could claim to get this revenue source. And if we can build up that claiming, which will take a little bit of time, working with staff to get more, more of the service providers that are, are staff claiming things like the OTPT and the DCBA, we should be able to increase this revenue source. This is sort of seed money to get us through a year, and then it'll be on the school district's, um, tasks to, to show that we've got the revenue increase to pay for this.
Oh, there's a question online.
Yeah.
Carolyn. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Hi, thank you. Um, just really quick, so I, that is like, um, the OTs, the two currently staffed, is that correct?
That's correct. The OT positions are currently in our regular budget, and the plan for next year is to move them to this budget, this funding source.
And then the DCBA would be a new hire?
Exactly.
Okay, and then what happens with, I mean, if we look at, and, and with Medicaid, and if the, um, doesn't pan out? Oh, we, we could reenter positions in the twenty-seven, right? So that, yep.
I think, if I heard you correctly, you're saying what happens if it doesn't pan out and we're looking at the positions a year from now? I would agree, yes. So we'll, for one year, we'll have a funding source based on the warrant article, and then we'll need to look, the intention is to increase the revenue. But if something, um, doesn't work out with the federal funding, we would need to revisit this all for our FY twenty-seven budget with the understanding that the school district would need to, um, put the positions back into its budget if, if the revenue doesn't increase significantly enough.
Okay, which, and if I remember correctly from the other night papers with me, but you did add positions to be behavior interventionists?
There are two behavior interventionists. Those are different than a DCBA. Uh, the behavior interventionists have been some.
Oh, no, I know.
Oh.
Their positions were created using the, from the old positions you're moving, correct?
Correct. That, that is, yeah. So I think you're saying, yeah, we, we have two, these two positions are moving off the operating budget onto this funding source because these positions are directly tied to the types of services that the Medicaid funding is done with. The other two positions are behavior interventionists, we're adding two behavior interventions, which has been a strategic goal of the school committee. Those are for not just special education students, but all students to help with, you know, significant behavior issues that have been happening since COVID.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Article Five, again, has to deal with the public schools. This is authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding for foster care transportation expenses. This is something that Mr. Manning brought to our attention. It's a one-time approval. We want to establish eligibility for reimbursement in both the current and future fiscal years. Upon approval of this MOU, Mr. Manning has identified about twenty-eight hundred dollars in reimbursement for these expenses. And this will be an ongoing, um, opportunity for us to, to get some money back that we've spent for the foster care transportation. Yes, sir.
What are you saying? You'll be, the town will be reimbursed? And how will it be reimbursed, please?
So, so we've already filed, this is, actually, it's, um, lagged, so there's a reimbursement available to us based on FY twenty-four. We, we, we do our twenty-four report in the fall, and these are federal, these are state reimbursement funds that are available to the town for foster care reimbursement. So it could be a situation where there's a student in Norwood, um, they're placed in foster care in another neighboring town. It's not, and they're still allowed to come to the Norwood schools, and we still transport them. They're not really homeless because they're in a home, but they're in a foster home, and it's not really special education. So it's, doesn't fall under any of the other transportation. And the town needs to approve this MOU one time, and then forever into the future, we can get this. But there's no cost to the town. It's not a huge reimbursement, but the state has told us that we will receive about two thousand eight hundred dollars. We just need the town to approve this MOU in order to be eligible for this reimbursement. And once we approve it, we can get whatever the reimbursement is in future years as well, without needing further approval in future years.
Yes, so that will be for the town to approve the memorandum of understanding, but there's no money?
Exactly. No money. In fact, we'll, once we approve it, we'll be eligible to receive those funds.
We need town approval.
But we need town approval. Just once. Yes.
Thank you.
Article Six, this is the appropriation for general government and school integrated hiring system. So we are asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, I guess I'll try to turn it over to HR, because I don't really want to try to explain this one, but I'll do my best and you can jump in. So in two thousand twenty-one, consolidation of the general government and school department human resources offices has led to increased operational efficiency. To build on this progress, we, we, we are asking for additional funding to basically increase the use of the MUNIS system. Again, those are major books and records. Um, they do have a, a system that allows for human resources to integrate data, allows for recruiting, onboarding, and substitute management within the school system. This, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to be used for training, the temporary consulting support to ensure timely and effective implementation. As anything with MUNIS, it's a very, very heavy lift to, to get a lot of these modules in. So it's going to be a lot of staff time, but it's also a lot of consultant time to get us into the right mode and then the right way to use that system. And they'll see each other, I'd like to.
That's a pretty good summary.
Is this a one-time bump?
This is a one-time loss, yes. And we, we already have the modules, so there don't be no ongoing costs outside of this. Yes, sir.
Does it save us anything? So we spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and, and I like the fact of automated stuff, teacher calling, I'm aware of that. That's chaos at, at best. But does it save us anything?
Hi, I'm Lisa Higaloro. I'm the HR director. And I would say that, uh, right now, we have multiple systems and processes so, uh, that we're, we're trying to bring together. So it does save us, uh, time, like staff time and efficiency. It also saves, um, believe it or not, time for the finance department and for the payroll department because, uh, the things that we're going to be fixing and adjusting will allow us to better use the current modules that are in place. So does it save us money in the end? It will save us, uh, additional services that we're using to do onboarding and different kinds of recruiting. It will save us a little bit, but, um, the, the biggest savings is really going to be in efficiency, um, given the number of hirings that we do every year.
I, I appreciate your response. I'm extremely cynical about the comment, automate the hiring process. Just letting you know.
I, I can appreciate that. Um, it is, it is not, um, very automated right now. So just as an example, um, when, if you were to apply for a position, uh, that came open, you would send an email to the HR department. The HR department would, like, manually take that email and send it off to the hiring managers. And the hiring manager would then manually review all the candidates. And once, once a decision was made throughout that very manual process, then we have to physically send forms to the person that's coming, um, onboard and, and then data entry that into the system. This would allow us to, right from that first application, have the information put right into the system. So if we decided to hire you, we could just click on a, on a, on a box, and then all of your information would go right into the system, which really would, it, it does work. Um, there are other systems, there are other software programs that, um, are, are out there, but we'd rather use MUNIS since we have it.
The savings is more longer term too. You're not adding bodies going forward. You know, again, just from my own standpoint, from the, the accounting office, we have four people managing a two-hundred-million-dollar operation in terms of books, records, and auditing. That's pretty good. Yeah, exactly. So MUNIS does a lot of that work for us. So that is the look going forward.
Thank you.
Another question.
Right now, you are still manually calling for substitute teachers? You're not using an application like Frontline? Like every other school system on the face of the earth is?
We are not currently using a substitute.
You've got to be kidding me.
We have three, um, people on staff that are doing, uh, yeoman's job, calling early in the morning. Yep, so they actually could, um, call people, um, to do that substitute. And, um, the, besides it being inefficient and challenging for the substitutes, um, there are, because there are systems out there that allow a substitute teacher to look and say, oh, what are all the openings today?
Yep, that's what I do.
Um, Norwood is not on there because we, we don't have that type of system. So we are losing substitutes which are, um, really at a premium right now. Um, we're, we're not being able to hire the substitute teachers that we need because we don't have this, um, system.
And pay level could also be impacting that.
Believe it or not, we've actually done some research on that because we're, we were wondering like what's causing this, and Norwood actually pays pretty well. We've had people say, I would totally have taken the Norwood substitute job over this other job. I just didn't know it was there. And, you know, so it works all manual. We have three people that make phone calls every day.
I can't believe you've been doing that.
There's a question.
That was my horror to have read as well, so I was just, that's been quite funny.
That's the DACA just.
Here. MUNIS is a very large system. It's very expensive. I, I understand we already have the licenses for the modules, and we're trying to use them to implement them. But every year, we're paying more and more for this system, and the more we invest into it, the more we are trapped in its cost structure. So what I'd like to understand is what else was looked at from applications and process before committing to investing in a massive system and implementing more modules? I understand efficiencies, but what you are saying is we're spending money on a big system that costs more every year. And the only thing we're getting out of it is soft costs, inefficiencies, which are hard to determine. Because, yes, it'll save you three people on the phone, and yes, it'll make this process more streamlined because it would be inside the system. But soft costs can go away, and if MUNIS decides to make a change, or they become too expensive to maintain. So what else did you look at before committing to this that, you know, now we're paying for the implementation on?
I can, I can certainly answer that. Um, so there are three kind of different pieces to this. There's recruiting, there's onboarding, and then there's the substitute management. For the recruiting piece, we looked at, I think we did like four or five different demos, um, at, um, outside software systems that do this. We looked at Bamboo, we looked at Clear Company, I mean, there was, there was a few different ones, and they were fabulous. They, they did all kinds of great things. And they said that they, we could upload stuff into MUNIS, and they could make it really great for us. But that's, that would be an ongoing cost every year, right? We would have to pay to keep that software up and running. So while it offered us, um, some great efficiencies and some, uh, great software, uh, it, it didn't, it, it wouldn't integrate as smoothly as if we used our existing module. Um, same thing for onboarding. Onboarding right now, we are using, um, Adobe Sign to try to make it as, um, electronic as possible, but still, it's, it's very manual. So, um, there, the, a lot of the recruiting systems that we look at also do onboarding as well. And then for substitute management, uh, we did look at Frontline, um, we looked at, I don't know, two or three others outside of, um, Frontline. And again, they were all pretty great. They all offered some nice services, but it wasn't fully integrated with, um, MUNIS. Having MUNIS do these things for us allows us to have everything kind of fully integrated from step one.
There's another, there's a text question from Carolyn.
You know, MUNIS has, uh, MUNIS has an open API that you can integrate pretty much anything else into. So we're paying for implementation costs as part of this hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You could, this is easily said, this system is much better because the features are better, and we're going to pay for the integration costs at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we're not more heavily embedded in MUNIS. That's my thinking on this?
Yeah, I, I totally see that.
Honestly, I'm not sure.
I, I tried to make that case too, because, um, these other systems that we look at were so flashy and fancy and really, um, really fun to use. But, um, what it comes down to is if we have it actually integrated with MUNIS, uh, that really benefits us from a budgeting standpoint, from an accounting standpoint. A position opens up, we can point exactly to the position that's open. Our accounting, um, staff know exactly what is open, what's available. So it actually integrates with some of the other modules in a way that we wouldn't necessarily get with the integrations from these, um, flashy systems that we have, that we look at.
Again, just to be clear, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the estimate of what we think we'll need. We may not need all of that. And if we don't need that, the rest will fall back to free cash. So again, this is our best estimate of what the cost will be. In addition, head to your point, Tyler Technologies, who owns MUNIS, they have a wonderful business model where they're going around and buying all these small companies as well. So if we do whatever companies we mentioned before, there's a very good chance Tyler Technologies is going to go buy that. And then they're going to convert us and say, you have to pay a fee to now do a new implementation to get us to MUNIS.
Right, well, they're buying all the companies up because they're increasing software costs by five percent every year.
Absolutely, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, and, and I understand that. I fully understand it. API integration would allow for full integration, and you could actually look at something else. It's all I'm suggesting. I don't know one way or another on this. I understand what you're saying. I truly see the value, especially from a process standpoint, that how this can streamline a lot of things. I am concerned, though, about the ongoing costs that are going to come with this. And, you know, these are good costs, so we're talking about five years down the line. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
If you guys don't mind, I just want to remind folks, um, I got to put my moderator hat on for a second. The, the info session is for questions. It's not to debate the actual article. That is for town meeting floor. So we're, we're being, we're being very lenient about that, but, um, really, we're asking you to be mindful about not taking positions on things. This is really about questions and information, yeah, where. So you can do what you need to do on town meeting floor. Thank you. I think there was a question.
There's a question from Carolyn. She asks, is there a benefit to bringing on the same system as the rest of the town because of the shared costs and full-town insurance coverage and benefits, or is this separate from that?
Great question, Carolyn. That's exactly what I was just saying. So I, I was trying to make the case for these flashy outside systems that we could, um, integrate with. But, um, what it comes down to is we, we will gain a lot of benefit by having one integrated system where all the different, um, modules are talking to each other. And, and not just from an HR perspective, but from, uh, payroll perspective, from an accounting perspective, um, and, and even like insurance and all that. Everything's kind of integrated. So we would, we would gain a lot of benefit as, as a town.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to Article Seven. This is another, uh, additional appropriation for water tank design replacement, requesting additional three-point-seven million in borrowing authorization. So like we described the other night, and then mentioned here before, everything costs more right now. So in November of two thousand twenty-three, this project was approved for fourteen-point-one million dollars. That was the borrowing authorization, borrowed through the state revolving fund, which is a two-percent interest rate loan. So from the January of two thousand twenty-three up until December of last year, the process went, went along. Talking to Mr. Ryan from the Club of Works, between the state revolving fund, um, the, the state and some other approvals we need. We finally got the approval in December, went out to bid in the first quarter of this year, received bids in the seventeen million dollars, seventeen eighteen, and I think the other one was upwards of twenty-two million dollars. So as I mentioned, again, I'll plug my, my disdain for ARBA, for American Rescue Plan, because there are so many uses of that. Water projects are one of them. A lot of communities are doing these, that increase the, the demand, increase the cost for all of this. So what we'd like to, what we're asking for is an authorization for three-point-seven million. This is not through the state revolving fund. They told us there are no additional funds, uh, available right now. So this, when it comes to it, may be a market borrowing, so it will not be at two percent. But it is something we need to get authorization to move forward with the project, sign a contract by June thirtieth, or the fourteen million could be at risk as well. So again, it's, it's not something we'd, we'd like to bring, but if there's a, an increase in cost, then it's something that we kind of have to do. Yes, sir.
What's not by SRF award, please?
That's the state revolving fund. So those are the ones that will be providing the fourteen million dollars of, of loans. And again, this is all paid for in the water store enterprise fund. This is not a general fund borrowing. It's, it's a town borrowing, but it's paid for from the enterprise fund. Yes.
What happens if town meeting goes? Enough's enough? No.
I'm sorry?
What happens if town meeting goes? Enough is enough? No.
Ask Mr. Ryan.
Hi, I'm Mark Ryan, Director of Public Works, Town Engineer. You put our water system at risk. We have two water tanks. One is 85 years old. It's past its life expectancy. The other is 65 years old, which is the bigger tank up there, which is very inefficient and is actually causing issues with water quality. So if we decide not to do any more, then we're putting our system at total risk for a, the tanks eventually failing, which they will, because they, at least one of them's gone past its useful life. And the other is the water quality issues are getting worse and worse each year because they're a large tank. There's a lot of dead storage in there. And we have to change the configuration of the tanks and put 2, 1.5 million gallon tanks up.
Do we use the water in the tanks, or are they just there for an emergency?
We use the water in the tanks. But the bigger tank, oh, two-thirds of that is not usable because of, you know, usable relative to town because of pressures. But we need that. We need those two tanks.
So it, sorry, Mark. Is it still, you're talking about replacement, not remining?
Correct. We, we looked at, you know, doing the tanks over, rehabbing them. You do that every 20 years. It was not cost efficient, because we'd have to be back within five years to replace one, and then another 10 years to replace the other.
Yes, sir.
Is this for one tank or two tanks, please?
Two tanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the water tank? So Article 8 is an appropriation to Compensated Absences Reserve Fund. Again, this is a, it's a fund that was established back in 2023. So the town has to pay when the police separates from service. We have to pay their accrued vacation time and in some instances, accrued sick time, depending on the tenure of the employee. So the town was smart to, to create this fund and fund it. There's about $2.1 million in that fund right now. The overall liability is roughly four to four and a half million dollars. So we're about 50% funded on an annual basis. It's anywhere from $300,000 to $400,000 in costs. So the goal is to try to put $250,000 for free cash in here. We do have a line, have them in the general fund budget, about $125,000. We'll try to increase that over time to cover the cost of the annual payments. Once we get this, again, this fund is separate. The interest earned in this fund stays in it. So that $2.1 million earning 4%, we'll, we'll earn interest over the year. At some point, we can then say, okay, this is fully funded. We don't need to do this anymore. But as we have free cash, this is a smart investment to make into that liability. Just one thing from, for an accounting nerd. This is the first year we actually have to report that figure. Before it was an estimate. So now it has been, it has required that we report the actual liability. So it will be in our financials going forward. Article 9 and 10, these are going to be more for improving the tools available for our, our financial stability. This one was brought forth by the Finance Commission to establish a capital stabilization fund. Obviously, capital is a, a massive need on a ongoing basis. Significant amount of money to keep up with the aging infrastructure and needs of the town. So the goal would be to set up this fund. The funding source would be free cash, capital project closeouts. It's managed by the treasurer. Again, if we do fund this and we have money in there, that money, the interest stays in there. So we'll be accruing additional funds available to pay for capital projects. Any appropriation, just to be clear, it has to be done through town meeting with a two-thirds approval. So if this fund has money in it, we can't just go and spend on capital project. It has to come through, go through the capital process. Most likely, it will be an event in the fall where we ask to spend any money that may be in that fund. Yes.
Would any of this money be able to be utilized for the water tanks?
No.
For the what?
For the water. Can you use the money to use for the water tanks? Why? So number one, the fund doesn't exist. So that's the main reason. Obviously, we're asking for a lot of borrowing, borrowing authorization. The goal here would be to mitigate borrowing going forward. If you have enough capital in there and there's some projects we would like not to borrow, we'd like to pay cash if we could. Yes, sir.
Am I correct in understanding, this would only need a 50 plus one, you know, 50%? Like, it just needs a majority vote? You need two-thirds to put money into it?
Yes.
To establish a fund, only majority vote?
Correct, yes. Yes.
So if in the future, we had money in this and something came up like the $3.7 million, we could just tap that instead of having to borrow? That's what you're saying?
Again, the, the creation of the fund would, would have to go through some, again, more iterations to determine what the fund could be used for. There'd be, needs to be a little bit more definition. So yet, but yes, in the grand scheme of things, if we had $50 million in that account and we had an unexpected expense of $3 million, the decision could be made to take it from that fund. Again, going through town meeting, it has to be, town meeting does approve that. Can't just be done by town employees. We can't just spend that money. Yes.
This is just a request to establish the fund, but not to put money, this?
Correct. This is only establishing the fund, yes. And again, it's, it's a solid tool to have in your toolbox going forward. And a lot of this came from the Finance Commission, again, as a result of having a very good year in terms of free cash. To lock some of that money up. Yes.
More questions? So this would join the general purpose stabilization fund as the two that we, I mean, we also have the override stabilization. That's going the way.
Correct, the override stabilization. So this would be another, this would be another reserve fund that we have, yes.
This would be one of two.
And then compensate the absence is another fund we have.
Yep, correct.
So again, it's looked upon favorably by the rating agencies as well.
Thank you.
Article 10, this is another creation only at this point, the creation of a pension reserve fund. And then Article 11 is to actually seek to appropriate C3 cash to this. So again, same thing, add another tool to our toolbox. I did mention the other night, you know, pension liability. We're only about 74% funded, so we have a significant liability. That is one of our larger lines in our budget. It would be going up 4%, potentially more, depending on, you know, the results of the, the recent market moves. So this will allow us to have a fund that we can then transfer. In the event we have good free cash here, we will be allowed to, again, come to town meeting and say, we'd like to put some money into this fund. What we could do there is we could take a, the thought process was if the market ever collapsed 20, 30%, we didn't realize what's going to happen the day after we talked about this. But in the event there's a significant downturn in the market, this fund had some money, we can send this money over to the normal contribution, contributory retirement system and help buy at a lower level. The other option is to accrue some balance in this fund to offset the future operating budget expenses. Like I said, it's, we know it's going up 4% right now based on our next evaluation. That probably is going to increase. So in the event we have a $7 million allocation in general funds, we have some money in this, we can offset that. So again, it's another tool in the toolbox for us to, to shift some, some free cash or some excess money a year in, if, in the expense. And this one does have an Article, Article 11 is to seek to appropriate 1 million of free cash to that fund. Questions on that? And the final article for special town meeting number one is unpaid bills. Unfortunately, this is an annual item. Bills do find their ways through the cracks. Maybe they haven't been received, or that wasn't paid for. The companies have not come back in a timely manner. By law, we cannot pay these unless we get approved from town meeting. So this is a, this is what happens on this one. Now we will go to the Community Preservation Act articles. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Scott Moss, and I am the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And in spirit and full disclosure, I'm also the Congress Representative on Community Preservation. And so we've got nine articles to housekeeping and then seven individual projects. So the first one is to allocate the distribution of our CTC funds into our funding buckets. So community housing, historical, oversight, recreation, and then administrative. Any questions? Thank you. And so the second one is to move the money that was just, or that will be allocated to the administrative fund over into the operating account so that we can spend that money as CTC ceases fit. And if there are any excess funds in that, at the end of the year, the money will be returned to that funding bucket.
What sheets are these? What sheets are these articles on?
Page 1D.
Page 4E. Thank you. You all set? Okay. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and move into the seven projects that we are moving forward to town meeting this evening. And the first is the Shared Housing Services Organization. And so that is $14,000. And that is for the shared services housing. So that is a group of local towns that the community development folks use. And the current agreement will expire in FY '26. So this is the third year of a third of, of our three-year commitment to this. Yes, sir?
Yeah, what does NOA get out of the shared housing organization?
So a lot of it has to do with our housing stock and our low-income housing and counting and also ways to brainstorm about how we can increase that. And so our community development folks rely a lot on this service.
How much of the service does NOA participate in?
So quite frequently, they use a lot of the services. So it's a resource to be able to create housing that's available for seniors, veterans. And so they, they feel like it's worth the while. Any other questions? Article 8, which is the Washington Heights roof replacement. And this is coming out of the housing bucket, and it's $300,000. And so the Washington Heights roofs are at their end of life. And currently, we have a commitment to, from the Commonwealth, to get a one-to-one match. I think there's some real optimism that we could get potentially up to a 2.5 to one match. And so if we get the one-to-one match, it's estimated that we could replace about 60% of the roof at this housing facility. If we're lucky enough to get the 2.5 one match, it's likely that we can do close to 100% of the roof there. So it's a really important project, and I think the, the sentiment is, is good that we might potentially get a larger match.
But from the state?
Yes. Any other questions? Great, the next one is the Highland Cemetery National Registry, Registry nomination. And so there has been significant work previously done on this. And so this $24,000 is going to be consulting services related to us getting this over the finish line. And so this is for the St. Gabriel Chapel and the Highland Cemetery. And so we're optimistic that with this last final ditch effort, we can get this on the National Historic Register.
What would be the impact if the cemetery is not on the National Register? $24,000 seems like a lot of money.
Actually, that's a good question. Well, I think we want it on the National Historic Register because it protects the development and some of the surrounding stuff. Chris, do you want to add anything?
Sure. So the major benefit, although some people may raise their eyebrows at this, is it does.
Can't hear you back here.
So being on the National Register does make you eligible for some grant programs that we are, we're not currently eligible for. That is the major benefit for it. There's also an effort by our Historic Commission to, to really look at the historic resources in town and get things on the register. There are only two properties in the world right now on the National Register. This is one that there's been a significant, there's been an investment in. About $10,000 over the course of the last 20 years, it's been spent on getting this through the, through the registration process. That process has changed significantly in the last few years, and there, there's been a lot of back and forth with the Mass Historic Commission, who is, who administers this program essentially. They would, they would bring it to the, the National Parks Service, who would ultimately make the designation. But yeah, so those are the two reasons.
What are the two properties that outrun the National Register?
Sure, it's the Day House and the Town Hall.
For which house?
The, the Day House, that Fred Holland Day House.
Okay.
Given that Trump is gutting all of those programs, do you think you're going to be able to get the reciprocal funding? And if this doesn't work this time, are you going to continue to bring it up to town meeting?
So I, I do think with the $24,000, we would get an answer. The answer would be, yes, it's eligible for listing, or no, it's not. And that would be the end of the, the story. It is a very long process. It's going to take at least two years. Once a consultant is hired, it's, it is typically a two-year process to, to get something listed on the register. So we could be into a different, or close to a different registration at that point. I don't know what the, the impact on historic resource programs has, has been. I haven't heard too much from, from MHC or some of the other organizations that they've been impacted greatly.
Brian?
Hi, sure. I, I'm curious, because I know that once you're on the National Register of Historic Places, if my understanding is correct, there are limitations to what kind of changes you can make, what you can do to the structures and so forth. I could see where the chapel at St. Gabriel might make sense. But can you help me understand how the whole Highland Cemetery, I would think that every time you needed to move a grave or move something around, you're, you're restricting that if you're actually on the register for the whole cemetery. So help me understand the thinking there.
So initially, the application was just for the chapel. And MHC came back and said, no, you have to do the whole cemetery. They were not just doing the chapel. It had to be the whole, the whole thing. And I'm going to ask Mark if he can maybe speak to any ramifications it would have for cemetery operations if, if it were on the.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't affect day-to-day operations one bit. You know, if we needed to move a grave, they're not going to get involved in that kind of work. But, you know, some of the buildings, because we do have two other buildings up there. We have the office building, and then we have the garage maintenance, which don't sound very fancy, but they're really nice buildings up there. And, you know, they would have some input on that, but they would also open up those buildings to any funding in the future. If we just did St. Gabriel's, we would just get funding to St. Gabriel's. This would provide funding for the additional buildings up there and maybe some beautification projects, which obviously would have to be approved by them before they're implemented. Day-to-day operations, it's not going to affect.
Follow-up question. I, I guess one of my concerns would be is that, for example, if you wanted to expand the building beyond what it's designated as National Historic Register. I know that, you know, even some buildings, you're, you're not even allowed to make them handicapped accessible because it would destroy the nature of it. So I'm thinking if you have to expand for some useful reason, the shed, for example, you know, if the whole cemetery is under this, does that impact your ability to develop it for, you know, to be more useful?
They would like some input on it. They would like to look at it, look at what the design is and what it's being used for. Make sure it's used for cemetery purposes only, not just another storage shed for Public Works or anything up there. They would definitely want to know about it and have some say in it.
But it doesn't necessarily limit if, if you find you need more utility, let's say.
Cemetery-related to support it.
Sure.
Would there be restrictions on the type of monuments that could then go in there on types of gravestones or tombs?
We, we already have those regulations, so that wouldn't change.
Can you let them know that we actually have to put this out to bid? It doesn't mean we're going right at $24,000. We need three bids, just so people at home that are county members, so they understand it as well.
Yeah, so this would, we'd be hiring a consultant, so we would be looking for three, three estimates. The one was solicited as part of the application process, just to get a baseline budget. We had the discussion with MHC as to whether they thought that would be adequate, and they, they said they could see a certain extent it would be. Historic preservation consultants are, believe it or not, hard to come by if anybody's looking for an encore career. But yes, it, it's something that we would have to solicit bids for, and it could, it could come in below that, below that amount.
So is, is the hiring a preservation consultant, is that part of this 25?
That's, that's what it should form.
It's specifically for that.
What's the status of the Morse House? Or has that already been applied for?
It, it has been applied for, yes. And we, we are in the back and forth with the Mass Historic Commission. We're in that two-year process with Mass Historic to get a name for them on the Morse House. With the Mass Historic Commission.
The Mass?
The Massachusetts Historic Commission. They're the ones who administer this program.
They're communicating with them.
Yeah, yeah.
Can the two projects be tied together to save any money?
Yep. Any other questions? Thanks, Chris. All right, and our next is the Walsh School Elliott Field ADA ramp. And we were before town meeting to get funding to do this work. And there is some remaining funding in there to do the ADA ramp. We have been coordinating with DPW and the original ramp design was a metal ramp. And I think it was determined that in terms of longevity and functionality, we were looking for...
No, it was a hardscape ramp originally.
Okay, it was hardscape, okay.
And the funding was not sufficient.
Okay, so the funding was not sufficient for the hardscape. So DPW is suggesting that we should do something that provides us with some additional switchback to be able to accommodate the ADA percentage of slope. And so we are asking for an additional $175,000 to do this work and also to be able to extend the rest of the funds that are in the current project to be able to do this project. And everybody feels really important that really, it's important to be able to increase the accessibility to this field and also create some new connection with the Bernie Cooper Park project. Yes, sir?
I went down and looked at that. Has anybody thought of the liability? Because the kids are going to be using that for skateboarding and bicycles. That's a pretty steep incline. I could see some problems down there with that.
Yeah, so it is a significant change in elevation. It's not going to be a straight ramp or back. It's going to go back and forth a few times, so it's not going to be something...
We'll still use it. The skateboard kids will use it, for sure.
It might be, but the idea is to provide accessibility for people to park up top, be able to go down to the softball field or the baseball field, or to the basketball court, or into the playground areas down there. This is the only, this is the best way to provide that accessibility to these people. Providing the cement concrete with handrails is the way to go with this. That's why the expense is where it's at. We can look at the design. Is there anything we can put to, you know, kind of discourage it? But you can't put something in the way that's going to affect the accessibility of the people, whatever way they're trying to get down.
But what is the total cost? We're anticipating a little over $200,000.
Well, the way over $175,000.
There's still remaining money in the budget.
Is it possible to get pictures of the area where the ramp?
There'll be pictures at town meeting, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. All right, the next is the Elliott Field feasibility study. And this is being advanced by Public Works and the Rex Department. And so they, Public Works would like us to take a look at reconfiguring the existing baseball and softball fields to improve the playability and also accommodating some additional sports programming. And so this study will look at reprogramming the fields and also increasing walk-in pass and connecting to the adjacent Cooper Park.
What is this under recreation?
Public Works and recreation, yes.
As far as CPA?
It will be open space and recreation, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions? All right. Number six, this is the land conservation fund transfer. And this is a proposal to transfer $10,000 from CPC to the Conservation Commission. And this goes into an account that we use to purchase land and do any supporting work to purchase lands, like D stuff. And so we have currently about $144,000. And we have currently done some work that is enabling us to potentially purchase some land adjacent to the Bernie Cooper Park that will enhance accessibility and improvements to the new Bernie Cooper Park. So it's really important for the Conservation Commission to build up a reserve, to be able to take advantage of purchasing any open space so that we can increase our percentage. Questions, comments? Great, thank you. All right. Number seven, as Concom Rep, I'm really fully supportive of this, and we have Harley from the Conservation Commission, our agent. And this is recommended funding to perform a feasibility in the Guile Pond. And this is supported by the Conservation Commission and the Norwood Sportsman's Association. And so the Guile Pond is not well-used. It's overgrown, a lot of invasive species in the pond. And we are proposing to spend $200,000 to hire a consultant to go in and do some existing conditions work, to take a look at potential options to develop this and make it more useful for the neighbors. A big piece of this will be community outreach and the adjacent neighbors and also some cost estimates about some potential options to develop this. The expectation is that the outcome of this would potentially support being able to pursue some state grant opportunities to be able to do this very similar to what we did with the Bernie Cooper Park. Yes, ma'am?
Where do you go for your consultants?
So this would be publicly bid. Brian?
Is there a way to go back to the previous and ask a question?
No.
You know, as I thought about it, as the slide's moving away, I'm thinking $10,000 buys a postage stamp-sized pond in Norwood. Is this because this is what somebody said they thought we might need? Or is there an opportunity to transfer a little bit more?
That's a great question. I mean, historically, since I've been on the Conservation Commission, that's been the number. I think the CPC really is dedicated to advancing projects. And while this is really important for the town and really important for the Conservation Commission, that seems like a proven number. We can certainly revisit that in future years and see if we want to do something more. So I agree with you.
I think this is a great idea to put money aside so the Conservation Committee can buy land when it's immediately available and have the funds readily there. And that's the purpose of this fund, to let it build up.
Well, that's great feedback. And so to be honest, I don't know that we have pooled a dish Concom committees around Commonwealth to see if, I know certainly Concom or CPC fund Conservation Commission. So it's great feedback for next year, but I think, you know, moving forward, it would be $10,000 for this year. Joe?
So the benefit to that question, the benefit of having this fund under the auspices and the control of the Conservation Commission is that at any given time, if an opportunity comes up, they can, as long as it falls within the, you know, the dollar parameters that they have available, they can go out and, like in the case of the, there's a parcel that's adjacent to Bernie Cooper Park, that the owners actually donate, have donated it to the town. But in order for the town to accept it, the town has to go through a title search and a valuation and such. So that value is less, something less than $10,000. But it's still something that if it weren't for this fund, the town, we would have to, we would have to go in front of town meeting, like the next town meeting ought to call a special, and go through the whole exercise of calling a town meeting just specifically to spend $10,000. So to have, the fact that we have this fund available, like it allows us to kind of act on the, you know, the spur of the moment when the, when the opportunity arises. Bernie, the Bernie Cooper Park, for instance, was purchased with CPA funds. But in order to fund that, we actually had to call a special town meeting four years, five years ago, maybe, I think, at this point. So that's the alternative to having this fund available. To Brian's point, sure, you know, make it 75. But the Concom came to the CPC with a request of ten. So that's, you know, there's certainly a long list of things that in a perfect world, the town would have access to, you know, and it's not only, it's not only access, it's easements and it's valuations and it's, you know, other things, not purely acquisition. These days, $144,000 doesn't buy you much in the town at all. But it's, but it's great to have that fund available. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Brian. Any other questions on the Guile Pond feasibility study?
Catherine, we have one online from Carolyn Barrow. She asked, will the property owners be contributing to the study as it will impact their property values as the pond gets cleaned up?
They will definitely, community outreach is a big portion of the, will be a large portion of the RV, yes.
I think they're asking for a contribution financially.
Oh, gosh, no, 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 no. But we will certainly solicit community input in terms of what the proposed plans are and they will definitely have a voice in what happens there. So no, no contribution.
Well, I'm sorry, can I ask you about a void? Can I ask you about a financial contribution? From the property owners around the pond?
Yeah.
Interest in the restoration.
Yeah, there's no contribution from adjacent property owners. Contemplated as part of the study or the development. I said emphatically, can anybody confirm that? Okay, okay. All right, we've got some people shaking their hands. All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
Once this gets kicked off, how and where are you going to announce for community input?
It'll be very similar to what we did for the Bernie Cooper Park. Maybe not as extensive because the value is lower, but...
At least in the paper.
Oh, for sure, yeah. And on the website and yes, yes. And I think, my guess is we would be doing mailings to adjacent neighbors. So yes, thank you.
So I'm not familiar with the area around Guile Pond. And if, like, who owns the area around there? Does this have the potential for, you know, public benefit? Or is this really just going to benefit the neighbors who are adjacent?
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, the Sportsman's Club is adjacent to that. There's public parking there. So the goal of this is to increase public access to this pond.
That would be good to, like, when you talk about this, to maybe have a picture of what's...
For sure. Okay, great, great. Harley?
Yeah, so if I were to emphasize, I'm currently working with Conservation Center for the town. Guile Pond and the land it's on is public property. It's town property and the public is welcome to access the pond. There is parking there or you can walk there. And this would be for the benefit of the whole town. And with the concept of, sorry, better publicizing the fact that this is a town resource because it's not well-known in general by the town.
Brian?
And a related question. How much of the land surrounding the pond is public property? I know their residence is further back, but isn't there like a buffer, a buffer or something like that between what's owned? Is it like, do we know that?
Yeah, I mean, no, but can we present that at town meeting? Yes. Yeah, fair enough. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Approximately where is Guile Pond? I don't know where it is.
Behind the Sportsman's Club. Near the KFC, the Knights of Columbus and the Sports...
You can, if I were to, it's between Willet Pond and Ellis Pond. So there's like a stream that goes from Willet and then it becomes Guile Pond. So that stream continues down.
Yeah, you've got to walk behind the Sportsman's Club.
Yes, sir, Joe?
Just to comment on the access, there is a sign at the Sportsman's Club. It's, even though it's been there, I've walked, gone by it a million times, it wasn't that visible to me, I guess. I don't know. Are they, is part of the, are they going to do anything with the signage?
For sure, that'll be a big piece of it, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, CPC has some members that are very active in terms of signage. And yes, we would like to advertise it as more of a public resource. So yes, I think that would be a big piece of it. Any other questions, Catherine?
I just, I wanted to, I'm really confused about the public parking because I've actually tried to access the pond before and I've seen no parking signs at the Fisherman's Club. And is there anywhere, I mean, other than the maybe 15, 20 spots that are there, is there anywhere else for public access to the pond to make this a resource that we're investing in for the entire town of Norwood?
So that's a really good point. And we are in discussions with the Sportsman's Club about making that parking or, making that parking more available for town residents. So that is a big piece of what we're going to be taking a look at.
So currently, the task is to spend $200,000 on feasibility and study restoration plans for a pond that we have no confirmed consistent access to that we're aware of. Is that correct?
So, so agreed, but the Sportsman's Club is owned, that parking lot is owned by the town of Norwood and some of the signage we are going to be looking at might not be totally appropriate. So what you're saying is accurate now and it is part of the feasibility study to open up access and make it more welcoming to public. Got another question?
Who's going to maintain it after it's...
That's part of the feasibility study to look at, depending on what the recommended actions are.
Is it going to be thrown back at Public Works?
Excuse me?
Is it going to be thrown back to Public Works?
I think some of it might be beyond what Public Works can do and might be the responsibility of Conservation Commission. So that is all part of the feasibility study. We certainly wouldn't propose something that has huge maintenance obligations that would have the associated costs. So I think that's all part of what we're going to be looking at. Is that accurate, Mark?
Yes, it is.
Great, thanks.
There's a question online.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Isn't the pond a catch basin from, you know, the overflow from Ellis Pond?
It is overflow from Ellis Pond, but I wouldn't characterize it as a catch basin. It's a water body.
Okay. But isn't it continuously silting because of that?
I'm going to ask Harley to weigh in on that.
So Ed, the Guile Pond receives water from Willet. So the flow is from Willet Pond to a stream which then enters Guile Pond, which exits via a stream which enters Ellis. That's the flow.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Great, thank you. All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
So thank you, everybody, on behalf of the Office of the General Managers. Wanted to say thank you to all the town meeting members who've come out over the past couple of nights to join us for these info sessions. And also thank you to all the speakers and staff and volunteers that have graciously spent their time in presenting these articles to everybody so that they can have a better town meeting on May 12th. So see you all on May 12th and have a great evening. Good to hear. Bye-bye.